And welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, May the 8th, 2017. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Polika.
Here.
Mayor Potempianna.
Here.
And Mayor Folcher.
Here, thank you. When we have a quorum this evening, the next item of agenda would be the approval of the agenda.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a number of changes to the agenda. First, I'd like to add two presentations. The first is the Arts and Cultural Commission to talk about their piano installation. And the second one is an introduction of a new police officer. And in addition to that, because we're still waiting for guests, I'd like to move the Ferndale area chamber presentation to the bottom of the presentation list, from the top.
All right. You can do what? So noted?
So you go first, Frank.
I'll support those changes. I move to support those changes?
All right. It's been moved by Councilman Martin, supported by Piana. Is there any discussion on the agenda?
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Polika.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
And Mayor Folcher.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. We'll move on now to presentations. So I guess the first presentation will be our Poppy Week Resolution. Frank Flores is here every year to remind us of this important day or week in Ferndale. Frank, good to see you, sir.
Oh, great. Evening, Council and Mayor. Glad to be here again. Nice day. As you know, that Ferndale still is active a lot with our veterans here through some of a march and a parade and myself. I'm out and about with the city of Madison Heights. That's where I'm at, as the commander of that post. But this is my hometown here. I've done a lot with her work here. Each year around May, Memorial Day comes around. The Veterans of the Foreign Wars and American Legion, along with their auxiliary volunteers, distribute millions of those bright red poppies in exchange for contributions to assist disabled and hospitalized veterans. The program provides multiple benefits to the veterans and to the community. The hospitalization of veterans who make the flowers are able to earn a small wage, which helps them supplement the income and make them feel more self-sufficient. The physical and mental activities provide many therapeutic benefits as well. Donations are used exclusively to assist and support veterans and their families. The poppy also reminds the community of our sacrifice and the continued needs of our veterans. The poppy has become a national symbol, known and recognized, of the sacrifice and who is warned to honor the men and women who served and died for our country and all. Actually, the National Poppy Day is on the 26th of this month. That's the national. But usually, we start off early. A lot of them start off in May. And this coming, next Thursday, that's when we're going to make our poppy drive into city here. We'll have a few volunteers coming out here. So, as usual, I always make my presentation to the council, so I hope you guys take it deep in your pocket. I'll come right up there.
While you come up, I will read a proclamation, sir. The week of May 15th to the 20th, 2017, will have very special national significance because of its designation as National Poppy Week, a period when the emphasis is on raising funds for a broad project of unquestionable merit. And Americans enthusiastically support this annual tribute to their war dead, which provides funds for the rehabilitation and increased comfort of those deserving disabled veterans of all wars. And the sale of this flower of remembrance, again, will be handled by the American Legion and the VFW veterans with its auxiliary units. So now, therefore, I, David Coulter, Mayor of Ferndale, officially declare and proclaim the week of May 15th to the 20th, 2017, as Poppy Week in the city of Ferndale and urge all citizens to support this sale, which has great significance for the living victims of war. Sir, we'd like to buy ours, and I'm, I'll give you that as well. Thank you, Frank. How many years have you been doing this, Frank?
I've been doing this 39. And just coming here, just coming next year, I'll make a milestone of 40 years in that same corner that I worked on Nine Mile. And I have people that remember me all the time.
Oh, sure.
And, you know, as they go by, I see a lot of your fellow Ferndalians happy to see me there. And lucky me, I might go one more year, I'm still going to go strong on it. And I just hope that I don't miss everybody if I'm not there, but I will be there.
Great.
Thank you much.
Amen. Thank you, Frank.
Anyone else out here?
All right. So our second presentation this week, this evening, will be the Arts and Culture Commission. And Jason is here, the Chair of the Arts and Culture Commission. Oh, and he has help as well.
Two-person job tonight. Real quick, I just want to introduce Chris Castor, who's our Vice Chair, and he's going to talk about a project he's heading for Ferndale.
Thanks.
Good evening. How are you?
Good evening.
The Arts and Cultural Commission, we are heading up, and we've been working closely with the DDA and spoken with the DPW about this initiative. We're trying to place a public piano in the pedestrian walkway between West Nine Mile and Troy Street, where the initial, I believe it's the first mural that was ever installed in Ferndale resides now. We have a sponsor for our project in the piecemeal kitchen. The owner, Mana Hashmati, is a Ferndale resident and have reached out, finding interest in being a sponsor for this. So we have financial sponsorship through her and her company for moving the piano into space, tuning it, as well as securing the project. And we've worked with the DDA on that concept, with DPW on how to secure the piano. And we just kind of wanted to give you guys an overview here today as to what our initiative is about and what our goal is here, if you don't mind. So we first noticed that a similar project had been installed in Boston and in many big cities around, around the globe, actually. And we saw that there was a great public response to it and thought, this would be a great, small project for us to start off, at least just to do one. And the goal is that it's a public piano, open to anybody, for everybody to be able to play in the downtown district. So from that concept, we started to, to develop the concept, to put it in just for the summer months. So we're hoping to do this, I believe, May 25th is our execution date in order to install it, and we'd like to do it through mid-September. We've discussed with DPW how to bracket the piano, and our goal is to bracket it down to the actual cement, to the foundation, and then run chains to it, and then run chain from the piano to the bench to secure it. That was one of the most important things that we found. Secondly, most important was, of course, leaving space for handicap and, and wheelchairs and things along those lines. Again, our goal here is just to create a musical culture in the city, obviously, and, you know, bring something exciting for anybody to play, children, adults, anyone of any age to be able to do so. We also have seen some of these public pianos have success in Royal Oak and Detroit as well. And the major success that we've seen, other than the use of the piano, is also that it has, they haven't incurred any vandalism or graffiti, which is one of our major concerns. We are planning on clear coating it with anti-graffiti clear coats, which gives us at least three swipes at if there were to be vandalism done to it. We would be able to wash it off at least three times before having to replace either that coat or the piano. Now, of course, because we're not under any type of pavilion or tenting, our goal was to look at it and say, how long will this piano be able to last in summer weather? It was, we found it more conducive financially to be able to replace the piano than it was to put something over it, because so many pianos are readily available.
Really?
People are willing to donate, quite, quite, quite many of them.
Oh, wow.
So because of that, we looked into it and saw that moving it and/or tuning it is a lot cheaper than trying to build a structure and/or a shelter for it. Okay? So that is the concept behind it. We also have spoken with the nearby businesses just to see, you know, if it would impact their, their footprint or anything along those lines. All the businesses that I've spoken to in that area are very excited about it. Only one, which was Candlewick, had the wish for it to be on the south end of that pedestrian walkway so that it would not disrupt any of their meditation spaces that they have over there. So we're working with that concept to put it on the southern end of the pedestrian walkway there. Again, I just kind of wanted to present this to kind of give you guys an update as to some of the hard work that we volunteers at the FACC are doing and kind of get it on everybody's radar, let people know that soon we are planning on placing that there, and we hope that people will come out and play it and that it will be an additional piece of culture here in Ferndale.
If I may, through the chair, I'm really glad you did, because two months ago, we amended ordinance 1191, which does now requires a permit. So I didn't, I'd asked the city manager to have CED work with the Arts Commission to obtain the permit, you need to install it by the 25th.
Great. Okay. Perfect. Excellent. We'll do that. And then, Ike, of course, is there any other concerns? I would, I really, other than letting you know?
Yeah, I would just open up to council if there's any questions or comments, concerns.
I think it's a great idea. My only concern is with special events going on in the downtown, that alleyway or walkway is used a lot of times by special events. I know Ferndale Pride uses it for activities and so on and so forth. So you might want to work with Michael Leary, with our special events coordinator, to make sure that where this is being placed, doesn't interfere with, you know, future public events.
Absolutely. Yes, we will do that, I think. Thank you for that.
And then my only concern is if it is on the south end, the, the sound that, you know, at 2:00 AM, you know, you get people who are drunk, you know?
I understand. I live right behind it.
That sound, you know, vibrating toward, you know, Saratoga homes.
Yes. We are planning on putting it up against the wall that would be the structure, that would be the west side structure. So I'm hoping that the noise will actually reflect towards Woodward is, is the main goal there. Obviously, also, that wall, that structure provides a little bit of shelter from weather. I can do a little bit more of doing some sound testing over in that area, I suppose. I do live right behind there on Albany Street, and I hear that, that noise. And it definitely is something I believe that us neighbors in that neighborhood are used to at this point. However, if it is a concern, we can address it more.
Used to and adding to are two different things, though.
I understand. Yeah, it's true. Are there any other things that we can accomplish before we go ahead and move forward?
My only other concern would be that Councilman Polika attempt to play it, but otherwise, I'm fine.
Not me.
You're all more than welcome. We'd love to have any of you.
I can't even play chopsticks, so you're...
That may be even better. Maybe we could get somebody that could teach you how to.
Well, it's a creative idea.
At 2:00 AM?
It's a creative idea. Thanks for bringing it forward and thanks for explaining it to us.
Absolutely, and thank you for your suggestions. We will be sure to follow up. Thank you.
Thank you. Next presentation will be the introduction of our new police officer. Police Chief Collins is going to have the privilege of doing that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'd like to introduce our newest member of our police department. He started with us on April 21st. This is Ryan Smith. He is a Ohio native, which we will excuse during football season. He moved to Tecumseh, Michigan when he was a young man. He has gone, he graduated from Tecumseh High School. He has gone to several universities, including Northern Michigan University, Baldwin College. He played football there at both of those establishments. He's come back here, he's just finishing up his bachelor's degrees, got a couple of credits yet to get. But he returned to Northern Michigan University and completed the police academy at that institution. He graduated last year, and he is our newest police officer. We'd like to welcome him to the community and have the community welcome him.
Excellent, yeah. Brian, welcome to Ferndale. Good luck, be safe.
Thank you, sir.
Now, finally, the chamber, and I don't know if everyone is ready, we can even, where else we could do it, but is, do we think the chamber is ready to present? They can get by Frank the Poppy Man? All right. He's a tough, he's a tough salesman. Good evening.
Good evening. On April 25th, the Chamber of Commerce held its annual The Artist in You event at the Ferndale Public Library. The pieces are still up till May 21st, so I encourage you to see some of the pieces up there. The art comes from the Ferndale High School, Casa and University High. At the event, well, beforehand, we had judges take a look at the art, and we picked, to pick the top three pieces. And today, I'm here to award checks to the top three winners for the three pieces. And the number one piece, their piece will be blown up six feet by four feet and put on the side of a building somewhere in Ferndale, so we're really excited to do that. And right now, I'm here to, I'm here to present the checks to the three winners. Third-place winner is Sophie Bluenstein, or Elliot Bluenstein. Okay. Second-place winner, third-place winner is a $50 check from the Ferndalery Chamber. Second-place winner is Tohev Ngadi. And our first-place winner, whose art will be converted into public art, is Aaron Burcham.
Thank you.
Yeah. Wonderful.
Jerry, did you want to come say something?
I just want to thank you and thank the chamber and thank the Ferndale Library, thank the whole Ferndale community for being so supportive. This means a great deal to the students. It shows that what they do is really appreciated. And I think it's something that really enhances the city, too, because they're really pretty good at what they do. So thank you on behalf of everybody. Everybody that participated got a great deal out of it. And I hope you can stop by the library, if you haven't yet, to, to see the show. Thank you very much.
You teach them well, sir, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you as well.
I also want to introduce our incoming Director, Matt Suk, of the Ferndale Chamber of Commerce.
Come on up. Hello again. Tell us, tell us and the community a little bit about yourself.
Well, I've been working up in Mackinac City, running the chamber up there, and now I'm down here and looking for the challenge. So I just came on Sunday, so.
So first day on the job, literally.
Yep. It's a long one. I'm okay with that. I'm used to that, so.
Well, welcome.
And I'm looking forward to, I've talked with April and I've talked with Melanie as well, so. Going to do the RRC training tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you.
Because I know we're getting their certification, the city, so, and I want to be part of that, so. Yeah.
Well, we welcome you to Ferndale.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
We look forward to having him, and I know it's a very drinking-through-the-fire-hose kind of training session for the next two weeks. So he's, he's really done well, and he's really embraced the community, so we're really excited to have him.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, the camp, for all the, the service that you've done.
Yes. Good point. Good point. All right. That can, I believe that completes our presentation this evening. Moving on now to, a public hearing, this says, but it doesn't say for what.
Sorry, we don't have one.
We don't have a public hearing this evening. I'm sorry, that's not, shouldn't be on the agenda. The next item of business would be the Call to Audience. Call to Audience is your opportunity for those of you who are here with us in the audience to come up and address council on any issue that you would like, for three minutes or less, on any issue that's not on the agenda, because you can speak to that when we get to that portion of the agenda. So is there anyone here with us this evening that would like to address council? Ann Heller.
Yes. Good evening. Good evening, Ann Heller, 1024 Leroy, tonight speaking as Board President for Fern Care Free Clinic. And I have two things. First of all, I would be remiss just to remind everybody that our Ninth Annual Fund-Raising Dinner is coming up in about a week and a half, on Thursday, May 18, 6 to 9, once again at the Dawson Great Lakes Museum. And we encourage everyone to come. Tickets are $50, and of course, sponsorship opportunities are available. And it's simple, you just go to our website, www.ferncare.org. All of the information is on there. And just as a little teaser, the Dawson has put in some new exhibits again, so there's some things perhaps that you had not seen last year, so please, we'd love to, love to have you come. And the second, this is one of the reasons why Fern Care is just so wonderful, and this is my distinct honor. Two of our medical professionals have received national awards, and we are as proud as peacocks, I have to tell you. The first is Diane Dengate, and she has been our co-head nurse from our very first clinic. So she's been with us for the full seven years as clinic, and the year before when we were setting up the clinic. And she has received the National Award of Excellence in Nursing-Practical Unit, and this is from the Association of Women's Health, Obstetric and Neonatal Nursing. And when you think of all of the nurses that work in obstetric settings and in neonating, neonatal settings across the country, and she was chosen for this singular honor, we are very, very pleased. And the second goes to Amy Davison, our clinic manager, and she's been our clinic manager since 2013. And she has received, then wait till you hear, her professional organization, the National Commission on Certification of Physician Assistance. And this is the 50th year that physician assistants have been recognized as a profession. And in order to honor that, they have picked 50 people from across the country to represent their profession, and Amy is one of them. And it was demonstrating her passion for delivering high-quality health care, promoting wellness, and saving and changing lives. And there are 115,000 physician assistants in this country, so to have been chosen as one of the 50 is quite an honor. So please, just for Amy and Diane, was so well-deserved, and you can imagine, everyone at Fern Care is just as proud as little peacocks. That's all. But I just wanted you to know, it's highly singular honors.
It's not only cost-free service, but it's high-quality health service.
Yes, it is. Absolutely. And this, this certainly demonstrates it, yes.
Thanks for sharing the good news, Ann.
Okay.
Frank.
Good evening again. I just want to bring a couple of updates on, as you know, back 2009, we sold our building to you guys, and eventually you sold it to a developer. But two things that I want to bring out is that one was that the cornerstones that were there at the building on Nine and Livernoy, they were removed when they demolished it this past year, and they are now in the museum. And the museum is going to display them once they're done next door to them. They have a little berm in the area where they're going to display it. Right now, it is being in the building, and they are heavy to bring outside, so those two things are there. And this past Wednesday, you know, this past Wednesday of last week, I turned over the flag of our post to the museum, seeing that we are no longer in existence, except there are still American Legions around in the state for other veterans to go. One thing I want to bring out is that the museum has been given a lot of the mobilia, memorabilia of equipment that we had in paperwork, pictures, and everything. So any veteran that's still in the city here that wants to see what we did back then, pictures, there will be one story put out in their crow's nest coming up, hopefully this summer, about the history of our post for you to see, so. But I'm still around. Everybody knows that they can, all they got to do is yell Frank, and I'll be around to help any veteran in any case. And then finally, I want to thank everybody that bought up, donated to the poppy program. And every year, I do this, and again, thank you and have a good evening.
Thanks, Frank. Michael Leary.
Hello. Just want to remind everybody that Saturday, May 20th, is Clean the Ferndale Up. It's our sixth anniversary. This year's event is sponsored by Ferndale Electric, Ferndale Community Foundation, Search Optics, and Contractors Clothing. And we also, on the same day, from 9:00 AM to 12:00, we also have the Temporary Recycling Drop-Off Station, which will be in cooperation with the Department of Public Works here. And during that time, the people here at the City Hall parking lot can drop off any of their recycling materials, such as computers, TVs, components, monitors, DVD, CD players, paint, no, no paints, no paints, hardcover books, magazines, plastic bags, and we can also provide you service for paper shredding. Any of the hazardous materials, Sakura has said, encourage us to take it to the recycling center between 14 and 15 Mile on Coolidge Highway. Also, just if you are still interested in volunteering for Clean the Ferndale Up, go on cleantheferndaleup.com so you can do your online registration there. The check-in will be here, starting at 8:00 AM on May 20th, here at Ferndale City Hall, until 8:45. At that time, we'll have our little pepper rally to get people excited, ready to go, and get dirty. So that's all the fun there. And then, finally, just want to remind everybody that on Monday, May 29th, is the 99th Annual Memorial Day Parade, which starts at Maplehurst and Woodward, goes down to Nine Mile West to Livernoy, and then to the Memorial Mall for the services. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Michael. Cindy, we could have had you as a presentation, you know?
Oh, that's okay. This is perfectly fine. I just wanted to give you guys a couple of updates on what's happening in the downtown. We are, for the second year, excited to partner with the Parks and Recreation Department on the downtown bike rodeo. Also, police, fire, and the city, and Ferndale Rotary are working with that. Rotary will, once again, be, be giving out free bike helmets to kids. Ferndale Police Auxiliary will be there, doing bike licensing. The Bike Shop will be doing some bike checkups, have a bike ride. So it's a good opportunity for people to come out, and it ties in really well with what the city's doing with Bike Month. So we're excited about that. We also have begun planning and have a date for our annual fundraiser for public art, The Art of the Cocktail. That will be June 15th, so details will be coming out soon about that. DDA staff just got back, and some volunteers, we just got back from the National Main Street Conference in Pittsburgh, so it's a really good conference. It concentrated a lot on public art, placemaking... It concentrated a lot on public art, placemaking, and communiteness, which I don't really think is a word, but the cool thing is, is we have it in Ferndale, and it was actually one of the best sessions I went to. So not only did we learn a lot about things that we can do in the downtown, I think there's other things that, because of the way our downtown is, we don't have green space and parkland, but there's things that we're looking forward to sharing with other departments and groups in the city that can hopefully run with those. So we are really excited about that. And then this Thursday are the annual Main Street Oakland County Awards. We do have some nominations, some projects and some people nominated for that, so hopefully next meeting we'll be able to announce that we're winners, because we know we are. So that is it, thank you.
Awesome, thanks, Cindy. Anyone else from the public like to address council this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on now to the consent agenda. Consent agenda are items that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless council moves something from the consent agenda. Let me read that now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the April 24, 2017, regular council meeting. Item B is the approval to observe Monday, May 15, 2017, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and proclaim the week of May 14 as National Police Week. Item C is the approval of a resolution in support of Oakland Community Health Network to recognize May, this May, as Mental Health Month, Mental Health Month, as submitted by Councilman Martin. Item D is the approval to proclaim May 7 to the 13th as Municipal Clerks Week in the city of Ferndale, as submitted by, guess who, the city clerk? Item E is the approval, item E is the approval to adopt the resolution indicating Ferndale's intent to participate in Oakland County's Community Development Black Grant Program for the next three years, and to direct the city clerk to forward a certified copy of the resolution to the county before June 12 deadline. Item F is the approval of the backfilling of the Deputy of Administration and Engineering for DPW. Item G is the approval of the special event permit for the 2017 Pig and Whiskey on July 14, 15, and 16. Item H is the approval of a payment of the Cummins Sales and Service Invoice to repair the fuel injectors on Engine 11-5, to be paid from the Fire Department's Vehicle Repair and Maintenance Account in the amount of $5,129.03. Item I is the approval of the Stormwater Maintenance Agreement with Ferndale Four Properties, and authorization for the mayor and city clerk to execute that agreement. Item J is the approval of a purchase of the Speed Patrol 18-inch trailer, including freight, from MPH Industries for a total of $8,221 from the Drug Forfeiture Fund. Item K is the request to approve the low bid of $64,218.80 to RS Contracting, Inc., to perform the 2017 Pavement Marking Program to be charged to the Traffic Services Pavement Marking Account. And finally, item L is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the City Manager's Office, subject to review by the Council Finance Committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
Your Honor, I'd like to, and I can never remember if we do this before or after a motion.
A motion first, and then comments.
Then I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Moved by Martin and supported by Leaks May. Now, any comments or reading?
With the chair's permission, I'd like to read the item C. This is for Mental Health Awareness Month, May 2017. Whereas the mental health is important to our individual well-being and vitality, as well as that of our families, communities, and businesses, one in five Americans experience a mental health illness that requires treatment at some point in their lives, and one in 10 children have a serious emotional disturbance that, if untreated, can lead to school failure, physical illness, substance abuse, jail, and even suicide. And May 4 has been adopted as the National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. Whereas stigma and stereotypes associated with mental illness often keep people from seeking treatment that would improve their quality of life, and that mental illness is a biologically-based brain disorder that cannot be overcome through willpower, quote-unquote, and is not related to a defect in a person's character or intelligence. Mental health recovery is a journey of healing and transformation, enabling people with a mental illness to live in a community of his or her choice while striving to achieve his or her full potential, and mental health recovery not only benefits individuals with the mental health disorders by focusing on their abilities to live, work, learn, and fully participate and contribute to our society, but also enriches the culture of our community and life, and finally, that the Oakland County Health Network and its service provider agencies are committed to inspiring hope, empowering people, and strengthening communities. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Ferndale, in support of Oakland County Community Health Network, recognize May 2017 as Mental Health Month. OCHN calls upon our citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit, yeah, to recommit our state to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses to promote recovery. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I have a question to the city manager via DPW. Item J, the pavement markings, it says that we're purchasing pavement markings for the next two years, and I was wondering if any of the crosswalks would be fixed in the downtown this year, based off of the proposal. It doesn't look like any of those will be added until next year's spring. Can you kind of review what is slated for the downtown?
Citywide pavement marking program, initially, all the long lines will be done this spring. The legend work, or the arrows and parking symbols and that sort of thing will be done in the following year. However, the downtown is always on our higher maintenance program, and before a number of the festivals this year, the paint shop will be out and be marking those.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure, because some of them are almost gone, and I wanted to make sure that we at least improve it for this season, so thank you for clarifying.
Anything else on the consent agenda? All right. Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers, Pollocka.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Anne Mircolter.
Yes, thank you, the consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to our regular agenda. Item A is the appointment of Mazgan Raji to the Environmental Sustainability Commission. I don't know if Mazgan is here.
It's Moskan?
Moskan, I'm sorry.
That's all right. She has an unusual name.
My apologies. Is Moskan here?
She is not, but she came to the FPSC meeting last, in the first meeting of this month, and so to introduce herself, and she applied, so. Why don't I pass a motion here, and then we can talk. I move to confirm the appointment of Moskan Raji to the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission for a term ending December 31, 2017.
Support.
Moved by Piana and supported by Pollocka. Now, discussion.
I've known Moskan for a while, going back to the Michigan Suburbs line when she was an intern, so she has a really good background in sustainability, and I think brings a really great perspective to the FPSC, considering what's on our plate for sustainability. I think she'll be a great addition. And she has a PhD in environmental health sciences.
A PhD in this, folks, and a master's in it. We get some highly qualified volunteers in Ferndale, I'm just saying, yeah. Very well qualified, and I've had the opportunity to meet her a couple of times as well, I think she'd be a great addition.
Yeah.
All right, other comments or questions?
Sounds great.
All right, Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers, Piana.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Anne Mircolter.
Yes, thank you, that appointment is adopted. Item B is also an appointment of Leslie Rivera to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. I don't know if Leslie is here.
Well, I'll title that one too, because the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority met this past week, and Leslie came and introduced herself as well, so I will start with, I move to confirm the appointment of Leslie Rivera to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for the term ending December 31, 2019.
Support.
Moved by Piana and supported by Pollocka. Now, discussion.
Leslie also comes with a bachelor's of science degree in environmental studies and urban planning degree, and she has already worked with the city of Ann Arbor in their stormwater practices, and I think really brings a great perspective to the BRA, as we're very active right now. So I welcome her to the BRA.
Other comments or questions? All right, Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers, Leaks May.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Anne Mircolter.
Yes, thank you, that appointment is also approved. Item C now is the consideration of an MDOT contract for Pine Crest resurfacing. And Lloyd, are you going to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Introduce that.
Before you, for your consideration, is entering a contract with MDOT for the resurfacing and reconstruction of a portion of Pine Crest between Nine Mile and the northern city limits. The total project cost, by engineer's estimate in the revised memo that you have before you, is 1.2 million, 1.2, I'm sorry, $1,261,725.50. If council chooses to enter into this contract, as long as the bids come back approved from MDOT within 10%, we are obligated to go forward with the project. The project is expected to take approximately 90 days, with the majority of the work we're trying to achieve prior to the school reopening, and so there's a real tight timeline on this project, and, you know, we're going to be monitoring it closely to try to not interrupt the school's transportation system and the school in general.
You are passing around.
A question of clarification while we do this, so when you say we're obligated to take a bid within 10%, that's the lowest bid within 10%?
Yes.
Okay.
Lowest approved bidder, and they have to meet the contract specifications.
But it is, but we do take the lowest approved bidder within 10%. We don't, there's no scenario we skip over the low bidder that qualified?
The only way that we would, they wouldn't be a qualified bidder if, for some reason, they bid low and did not meet contract specifications.
Okay, thank you. There's 10% is a lot of money on this one, you know.
What do you think, maybe asking a question a different way too, is if we had issues with a contractor, though, and would they already be deemed not qualified?
We could disqualify a contractor, obviously, we have to work through MDOTs if we're taking federal funds. Our own contracts, we have much more control over, but because we're anticipating over $300,000 in federal aid, there's more restrictions and more of a process.
But if they, just to clarify, though, if we had used them before and they did not meet, they didn't do a good job for us, and another project, we could work through that?
Exactly, absolutely.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that as well.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I'll move that we...
Just that road is long overdue for resurfacing.
Yes, it is.
I'll move that we approve contract number 17-5169 by and between the Michigan Department of Transportation and the city of Ferndale for asphalt reconstruction slash resurfacing, concrete curb and gutter, drive approach sidewalk ramps, drainage improvement, structure adjustments, permanent signing, turf establishment, and pavement marking of Pine Crest Road from Nine Mile Road northerly to the north city limits of Ferndale, and to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute said contract.
Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Pollocka. Lloyd, when do we think, what's the timeframe for this?
It should begin, we're scheduling it to begin June 19, but we are really pushing the time schedule with MDOT. We expect to be able to meet, to start the project by the 19th.
All right, thank you. Other questions or comments, other than South Pine Crest?
No, I was going to say it again. It's coming.
I know. It is. All right, if not, Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers, Martin.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
Anne Mircolter.
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Thank you, Lloyd.
Thank you very much.
Item D is a consideration of the sale of 1221 Wordsworth, and Jordan, I think that's you, and the next one as well.
Hi, council, good evening. You are correct, this is for the sale of 1221 Wordsworth, a city-owned industrial property. Just a quick summary of it, it's at Wordsworth in the railroad tracks southeast of 965 Wanda. You're looking at a site that's approximately one-half acre with a building that is just about 11,500 square feet. It has had some environmental looks at it before, it is contaminated, we do know that. We listed this property at $65,000. We have an offer on the table for $70,000, contingent on the use of Oakland County Environmental Assessment Grants to cover some of the sort of fresh, updated Phase 1 and Phase 2 studies, which sort of establish details on what contaminants, if any, are on-site, as well as what's called a baseline environmental assessment, which sort of gets you into, you move beyond initial assessment and starting to talk about quantifying what you have to do to, you know, get to a usable property. So it's over asking. The proposed buyer is Jeff Denha, who owns 965 Wanda, who's sort of got an experience, unlike a lot of property owners in the city with brownfields, so we know what he's capable of in terms of past projects he's done, but CED does recommend seriously considering this offer, given that it's over asking. There you have it, but I'm here for any questions you have.
Questions to Jordan.
Sorry, I probably should have prepared you ahead of time for this question, but do you know how we acquired this property?
I do not, actually. What, I apologize, I don't know off the top of my head.
I'm pretty sure it's through tax foreclosure, but Cheryl's looking it up.
That was my guess.
I was going to, she was one of the two people I was going to lean to, either our city attorney or our finance director.
It's usually that, but I just wanted to make sure.
That's a fair question, apologize for not having that.
No, that's... It's not going to sway my vote one way or another, so it's...
It's 99% sure, so we don't typically buy property unless it makes particular sense.
Thank you.
And it's been on the market since February of '16, right?
At least.
So it's been sitting there a while, yeah, at least.
That's the paperwork I could find.
This is through the chair, just kind of a question based on the property sales with the city. Just based on a question I received earlier this week, how does one find out about the properties that the city has to offer?
So, we do have a GIS database that, it's been in process to kind of put these to a map and let people see. We make our department accessible, I think we have some old files on the website, so they're outdated. The problem with lists is trying to keep them updated. What we try to do is, we make ourselves accessible, if people want to inquire about property, they can contact our department, and we have that information, we can kind of show you. We do have the GIS database, which, it's live, but it hasn't been incorporated into the website since that's being overhauled right now. But that's a tool that, once we complete our overhaul to the new seamless website, it'll have that on there.
Also to clarify, too, all of our commercial properties that we feel are buildable or saleable are with CBRE right now, and the homes that are the residential properties that are buildable and saleable, as we like to say, have been with Keller Williams, correct?
That's right, Jim Schaefer's, yes.
I think we're almost done, though, with our residential plots that we think are buildable.
You know, that's an interesting question, though, because we have, yes, we have finally gotten off the books a number of them, but would it be possible to put together just a list for council and, you know, because I get that question, and I sometimes wonder that myself as we keep getting these, just to put together a snapshot, nothing in detail, but, you know.
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
Before, I want to clarify, I want to, if you could amend that action, I know it says to be placed in the general fund account, but it should say committed. I want to make sure the word committed is in that resolution to ensure that it stays in the fund balance until further directed by city council, so just put the word committed in the general fund account is fine.
With that said, I move that city council resolves to approve the purchase agreement for the sale of 1221 Wordsworth by way of the city parcel listed, for a total of $70,000, and to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the purchase agreement and all associated instruments necessary to complete the sale, with proceeds to be placed in the committed committee, committed, general fund account, 673, sale of city property.
Is there support?
I support.
So it's been moved by Leaks May and supported by Piana. Now, any additional questions, comments, concerns?
This is for Jordan. Is the buyer going to repurpose the building for their own use, or are they going to resell it?
I think the goal is to repurpose for their own use, so it's very close, you're talking about Wordsworth, correct? So that's very close to 965 Wanda, so there's an opportunity for synergy with that development. One of the conditions that was in the resolution is that it could not be used for, there were conversations when we first got the proposal, so one condition that was put in there... when we first got the proposal. So, one condition that was put in there is it cannot be used for medical marijuana use. Uh, it, you know, it, the idea was it had to be in keeping with the master plan for the, uh, the industrial district there. So, uh, the, the conversations that we've had with the proposed buyer was, uh, synergy with the existing industrial around there.
Okay. Yes. So, it can't be sold to the property across the way?
The property across the way.
Railroad.
Oh, uh, we did not forbid them from doing that, but, uh, that was not something we talked about at all with the buyer.
Okay, but that's not their intention, no?
Right.
Okay.
Other comments or questions?
Do we, do we need to put something in there about, about that?
About...
Sure. I mean, about not selling it to the...
About not selling it to CNN or to the railways?
They can do that, right?
To the extent that you wish that reflected in the deed, it, it should be made part of the purchase agreement. Uh, the, the prior mitigation agreement, uh, addressed the capacity of the railroad to acquire additional properties. I don't recall specifically that language, but, uh, there, there was a, uh, restriction with respect to the expansion of the railroad.
It was. That's right. We put that in there.
But we could add, we could add something for security.
If, if it's, uh, through the chair, if council wishes to make that a, a part of the, uh, transaction, it should amend the purchase agreement to, to reflect that. Uh, and I, again, the intent would be that the purchaser would be precluded from conveying it to that particular entity, like the railroad. Is that what...
That's my, yeah, that's my question.
But does that cover it, though? I have another question on top of that, because does that prohibit the owner then from selling the property to a third party who then sells it to the railroad? Like, I'm not sure that's complete enough.
Right. And I, and I want to believe the intentions of what has been put forth of council today, so, but I'm just trying to add another protection. And I think you're exploring that a little bit further, too.
It, it would be a restriction in the actual conveyance document, the, the actual deed, and that, that would control it. But as it relates to the specific control, uh, you can, it, it seems like you're, you're, uh, you, you could amend it to provide that, that additional restriction be added to the purchase agreement, that, that a restrictive covenant be added to the deed, that it not be commu, conveyed to the railroad.
I would, uh, accept the advice of our legal counsel if council would be in favor of that. And do we need to amend the motion, then? And then, Dan, can you help with a proposed amendment, please?
I will. So, if we add additional language to the purchase agreement to provide that as part of the conveying document, which is going to be a deed, that there be a restriction on any, uh, can, any future conveyance to the railroad or, or railroad entity, which is Grand Trunk.
Oh, for heaven's sake, you're never gonna remember that.
I'm writing, I'm writing it down, and Dan will help.
Okay.
I think Marnie has that.
Okay, so, um, I will make a friendly amendment to, uh, Councilwoman Leaks May's motion. Um, and the friendly amendment is, um, at what point, and to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the purchase agreement and all associated instruments necessary to complete the sale, um, and provide a restriction on a future conveyance, um, on Grand Trunk Railroad. Would that be...
I understand the intent of that motion.
Yes. No, no.
Just to further clarify, then, to add additional language, uh, to the conveyance, conveyance document that would limit any future transfer to the railroad.
There you go.
Okay.
To add, or, or more than limit, preclude.
Right.
Preclude.
Um, Madam Clerk?
So, oh.
Do you wanna read that back to me?
The back end. Okay, so, the amendment is to, for the restriction of future conveyance to Grand Trunk Railroad, to add additional language to the conveyance document to preclude any future sale to the railroad.
Except maybe not that first phrase, right, Dan? I, I don't...
Yeah. It, it's to amend the purchase agreement to add an additional restriction in the conveyance from the city to the purchaser, that any future conveyance, uh, not, uh, be made, or, or that conveyance to the railroad be precluded.
So, not to nitpick. But, is the railroad specific enough because of CNN change, CNN, CNN, CN changes ownership to a different railroad company, which occurs?
And has happened.
The, the language of the motion is clear enough, and I will...
That you can grasp that.
...that it includes the railroad or any successors or...
Or successors. Okay, thanks. So, the amendment is moved by Piana. Is there support for the amendment?
Yes, support.
There is support by Leaks May, so the amendment is now on the table. Uh, so let's have discussion on the amendment. Is there any discussion, questions on the amendment? Any issues with that that you see, Jordan? I can't imagine that Jeff is, I, I, I don't...
No, and I, I think it's smart to ensure you continue to get taxes on that.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions on the amendment?
Nope.
All right. On the amendment, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Polica?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you. So, the amendment is adopted. Now, back to the main motion as amended. Uh, any further discussion? All right. Marnie, would you call the roll on that?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Polica?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes. Yes, thank you. That, uh, item is adopted. Thank you, Jordan. And, uh, you're up next with the consideration of the sale of 208 Pinecrest.
Great. Uh, and if this one sounds familiar, it's because you did previously approve, uh, the sale of it, contingent on the development of a shipping container home. Uh, if you don't remember it, it's at Pinecrest in Bertha, one street north of Eight Mile Road. Uh, it's just about a tenth of an acre. Uh, it's a vacant lot. Uh, it's been on the market for a, a long time, uh, listed at $12,000. The original sale was for nine. Uh, we actually were fortunate that we received another offer, uh, at $9,000, uh, with no contingencies on shipping containers or anything else. The, the, uh, other buyer did just choose not to proceed with that, with that concept. And so, here we are with a new offer. It's back up for sale. It's the same nine grand, uh, for a development that'll be consistent with the zoning in that area. And this one, we did, um, I was able, thanks to our finance director, thank you, Cheryl, was able to find out, we did get this one through tax foreclosure, uh, for $0 in December of 2009.
Excellent.
I would again ask that you replace you, committed in place of placed. So, proceeds to be committed.
In committed general fund.
Yep, in general fund.
Yes, please. Uh, all right. Is there a motion?
I make the motion, uh, that city council approve the purchase agreement for the sale of 208 Pinecrest, city parcel 20, parcel 25-33-479-005, for the total of $9,000, and to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the purchase agreement and all associated instruments necessary to complete the sale, with proceeds to be placed in...
The committed?
Committed fund account, six, seven, nine, uh, six, seven, three, uh, sale of city property.
Is there a support?
Support.
All right. Moved by Polica, supported by Leaks May. Now, discussion on this item.
I do have a question through the chair. Uh, do you have any, well, you probably do know, but why did the first contractor pull out?
So, I talked to the Realtor about that, and they said it was an issue of, of the process not being fast enough. And, you know, I, I can't, I can't speak for what their rationale was. I mean, we put him in touch with, we had our building team with them the following week from the approval. They were here at council. Our code is pretty straightforward. Uh, and so, they just, for whatever reason, that was the reason that we were given. Uh, I, I tend to disagree with that. I mean, we literally had them in our office the next week. So, uh, that being said, they just chose not to proceed.
Other questions or comments? All right. Marnie, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Polica?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thank you, Jordan. Uh, that concludes our regular agenda this evening. Uh, we'll move now to call to council. And I'll start way in the back with Police Chief, Chief Collins. Anything for the good of the community this evening? Anything else good? Because that was already good stuff.
Very briefly, Your Honor and council, thank you very much for passing the resolution recognizing Police Week. I would like to invite everyone on council and everyone in the community on Tuesday, May 16th, for, uh, the police memorial ceremony out in front of, uh, City Hall at 10:00 a.m. Uh, so if you can make it, we appreciate you to come. And anybody in the public would like to come, they're more than welcome. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Uh, Jenny, anything from HR, speaking of all the way in the back? Get your steps in that way.
Good evening. I just wanted to really quickly remind, um, our residents and anyone watching that we are currently recruiting for a really exciting new position at our DPW, um, called a data analyst. Um, as you all know, Roseanne Simon retired from the city of Ferndale a couple weeks ago, uh, after 29 years of service. And so, um, that position's been changed up a little bit, and we're really excited with the quality of candidates that we are getting in for that position. Um, additionally, I just wanted to let council know, we did have our annual report delivered to us from our Care Here, our My Life Health and Wellness Center. We're gonna be bringing to council a more formal presentation here in the next couple months. Um, but just a little highlight, we, over the last year, in 2016, actually increased our utilization by 116%.
Wow.
And so, we've got some really great, exciting numbers to show that it is working, and we're really excited to bring those forward. So, more to come on that. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. Uh, Lorena, anything from the Recreation Department this evening?
Good evening. Just a few brief announcements. Um, number one, we're coming to an end of our soccer league for the youth, and we have a soccerama this Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00. Feel free to join us. In addition, um, as one league ends, we have another one beginning. So, we have youth baseball and girl softball starting in the beginning of June. So, registration is currently open for that. So, if families want to register their children, then feel free to do that. We still do have spots available. Also, um, just a reminder again, bike rodeo is coming up next Thursday, May 18th, so I hope to see everyone there. And, um, summer camp, summer camp registration is still open. Summer camp, the first week of summer camp starts on June 19th. So, we still have openings for that as well, and it runs through August, and it's registration for each additional week, where there's a different theme each week. So, the kids actually experience something different throughout the weeks through the camp. And lastly, um, we have hired a deputy director for Parks and Recreation, who will begin next Monday on May 15th, and her name is Lisa Bryan, and she comes from the city of Detroit. She was a supervisor at Patton Recreation Center.
Excellent. That'll be very helpful on it. Thanks, Lorena. Jordan, anything else from Community Development this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few quick event announcements. Uh, Ferndale Bike Month is continuing. Just a couple things coming up. So, tomorrow, Tuesday, May 9th, you've got a smart cycling class at 6:00 p.m. at the Ferndale Area District Library. You learn about hand signaling, simple bike maintenance, and more. Uh, the next group bike ride, uh, as part of Bike Month, is also coming up. It's gonna be Saturday, May 13th at 1:00 p.m. It's gonna leave from the downtown Ferndale Bike Shop. A couple other events. On Friday, May 12th, it's the Eight Mile Boulevard Association Leadership Luncheon at Cobal Hall downtown at 11 o'clock. And then, the city of Ferndale's redevelopment-ready community certification event is Monday, the 15th, 5:30 p.m. at Valentine Vodka's Expansion Space on Wanda. So, 965 Wanda.
Chief Sullivan, anything for the community from the fire department this evening?
Mr. Mayor, council, just like to remind everybody, if you'd like to have fires in your backyard, it is permissible, but you must pull a permit first, or you can get ticketed for having, uh, a fire. We will need to make sure everything is safe and in place. And you just contact the fire department. We'll send an inspector out, make sure every thing that you need to do it safely is there, and then you're permitted to go. It's only $25 for the first time. You maintain the property. We re-inspect every year to make sure nothing's changed. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Cheryl, anything from finance this evening?
Yes.
Good evening.
We just wanted to let, uh, all the citizens know that they have until next, or this Thursday, to pay up on their water bills, or they're gonna get rolled over to the taxes.
Okay.
So, we roll everything that's, uh, more than six months past due.
Yep.
And we'll be doing that on May 15th.
And they get a final warning for that, I imagine? Or, uh, they've had a number of warnings, I imagine?
This was it.
But this is, okay. Thank you.
They have, they've had multiple.
They've had multiple warnings, yes. All right. Park, I, you know, the parking, I, I don't really mean to ignore you, but is there anything going on in the parking that you wanna share?
Nothing new.
All right. Excellent. And Lloyd, anything else from DPW this evening?
Just some brief information for our residents on our pavement improvement program for 2017. Our contractor is Florence Cement, and they will be starting in earnest later this week and beginning of next. They are only permitted to have two, there are six areas total that the, the contractor will be working in. 19 segments of road this year. And, um, they will only be allowed to work in two areas at one time. They must finish one area before they can move into the next area or the third area. The, um, the, in addition to that, uh, we will have Pinecrest underway. We will have a con, uh, a crack ceiling contractor out, striping being done. So, certainly, there's going to be a lot of activity. Um, all that activity is being crammed into, you know, the construction season. You know, in Michigan, we only have so many days that aren't raining to be able to complete this. So, it's certainly going to be a lot of activity out there this year. And, uh, we'd ask for our residents' patience. And in addition to that, when we're into, in the local roads, and we're, we try to stage the construction so that it doesn't impact parking any more than necessary. Uh, most of the work being done, we will flip-flop between sides of the road and permit parking on the opposite side that we're not working on. Uh, there may be times when people have difficulty getting into their driveway, why cement cures and that sort of thing. Um, and we ask for their patience and possibly to talk to their neighbors who are not being affected, and share some parking until we can get through the process. Um, with any luck, it'll be another 20 years before we are back in on the roads and, and have to interrupt their life, uh, again. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Lloyd. Uh, Marnie, anything from the clerk's office this evening?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right. April, how about the manager's office?
Nothing tonight.
All right. Dan?
Uh, just one item. Uh, there is going to be this week a staff meeting regarding the Medical Marijuana Licensing Act, uh, with the expectation that, uh, some recommendations will be brought back to council, hopefully at the end of the month or the beginning of next month.
Excellent. Good. Thank you. Uh, Councilman Martin?
I have nothing this evening.
All right. Councilwoman Leaks May?
Nothing this evening.
Nothing this evening. Councilman Polica?
Um, just wanna remind people that, uh, Ferndale Pride is coming up on June 3rd. Uh, if you're interested in, uh, booth space, uh, there's only about eight left. So, better get a, get, uh, onto the website, www.ferndalepride.com, and, um, purchase your booth space today.
Good reminder. Councilwoman Piana?
Nothing, tonight.
All right. Wow. And I don't have anything this evening, uh, either. That's quite unusual for this group of folks, but, uh, probably a pleasure for the folks at home. So... But that meeting is adjourned.